This season may we never forget the love we have for Jesus. Let him be the one to guide us as another new year starts. And may the spirit of Christmas be always in our hearts. Let's sing Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday. This season may we never forget the love we have for Jesus. Let him be the one to guide us as another new year starts. And may the spirit of Christmas be always in our hearts.
In times of success give us humble and grateful. Keep us humble and grateful may this day not only prosper but also be a force for good to everyone. We entrust our work, our plans, and our future in your hands. Amen.
Ima ma Pilipino, tumo sa Sultan Kudarat. At ka is a't nakabuklo, iwan ni't inaguyon. A'is namin ipapatig, kami lahat magkapapatig. Sa Sultan Kudarat kami mahat hinig nam i-aalay. Ima ma Pilipino, tumo sa Sultan Kudarat. At ka is a't nakabuklo, iwan ni't inaguyon. A'is namin ipapatig, kami lahat magkapapatig. Sa Sultan Kudarat kami mahat hinig nam i-aalay. Bisik pag-isahin sa lahat ng bitin. Ang lakas pag-ibayuhin, bisik ni ay parirali. Sultan Kudarat sa gisak ng pagig matapak. Mabuhay, mabuhay, mabuhay ang Sultan Kudarat. Bisik pag-isahin sa lahat ng bitin. Ang lakas pag-ibayuhin, bisik ni ay parirali. Sultan Kudarat sa gisak ng pagig matapak. Mabuhay, mabuhay, mabuhay ang Sultan Kudarat. Mabuhay, mabuhay, mabuhay ang Sultan Kudarat.
Bigyang daan kami mangani lang, na isinilang sa kakimugan. Isulan ang tabak namin pangalan, ayaw tayong usoy may kakalagan. Kantungan ka ng bawat mikin, sapagabi sangdigan ka namin. Isulan 'yung simulangin, tanikala sa puso diwan namin. Sa pumsungang ang apagsubo, kaagapay kami magkakapuklot. Tugot ang tawis, alay sa hapon, buhay na sa kanapang payaman. Isulan, isulan, kapila ang 'yung pangalan. Abing pagyamin, likas mong kayangatan. Ipantila ang karanada, o mahal na vige ng payan.
My fellow councilors, raise your hand and together we will cite the Councilor's Creed. I am a Philippine Councillor mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances to rebound to the general welfare of my constituents under pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service above self as a guiding principle of my official act and as a trend of the pathway of local legislation. May the mighty guide my mind and heart that I shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
Okay, so let's have the roll call. Okay, let's have the roll call.
Honorable Arnold Armada, Honorable Carloapiado, Honorable Moses Dular, Honorable Alfonso Dimasui, Honorable Darlene Lama, Honorable Marvin Delanon, Honorable Anna Fe Colliado, Honorable Janice Choi Doliette, Honorable J.R. Dizon, Honorable Joffre Dorana, Honorable Welljohn Foscablo. So at this moment there are seven members are present and four members are absent. Those absent are Honorable Moses Dular who is unofficially Honorable Mark Bind Delanon who was able to inform the Secretariat as to the reason why he is absent. Honorable Joffre Dorana is currently on official business, Your Honor, and Honorable Welljohn Foscablo informed me that he will just be late, Your Honor.
Honorable Marvin Delanon is on official travel. A human settlement townhouse, a whole day seminar. Okay, so quorum is declared.
So we are now on the reading and consideration of the minutes of the previous session. We have the minutes as of November 17, 2025.
Seventeen, okay. Let's go over our minutes of our session held on November 17, 2025. So any correction so far?
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Carloapiado is recognized.
If there is no correction on our minutes dated November 17, 2025, I move for its adoption.
Okay, so the minutes of our regular session held on November 17, 2025 is hereby adopted.
So Your Honor, we are now on the Privileges Hour.
Okay, any member like to render a privilege speech? Honorable J.R. Dizon is recognized.
Mr. Chair.
Please proceed.
I would like to move for the passing of resolution commending congratulations to the two young brilliant Isolanon mathematicians for their outstanding performance in the Regional Mathematics Olympics 2025 held at Tupi National High School last November 20 and 21, 2025. This event was participated by all school division in Region 12 including South Cotabato, Cotabato Province, Sultan Kudarat, Sarangani, General Santos City, Coronadal City, Tacorong City, and Kedepawan City. I happily announce that we earned the top two ranks in the competition out of forty individuals across Region 12. The top one is or the champion of the event is Alexander Franco Alaba Alquaidi, a Grade II student of Isulan Spad Center. And the top two is Mercy Pauline Lixela B. Lucas, a Grade III student also from Isulan Spad Center. We are very grateful for bringing pride to our municipality with your incredible achievement, your hard work, and success have made us proud. This truly showcases the excellence of education within our beloved municipality. We hope this victory will inspire young more Isolanon. We also extend our heartfelt congratulations to the supportive parents and dedicated coaches who guided them towards this remarkable achievement. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so both elementary students, wherever they are.
Grade II and Grade III student.
Grade II and Grade III and they rank one and two in the competition.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so if there is no objection, the resolution proposed is included in the first reading this session. Any more matter? Yes, Honorable Carloapiado.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate and commend the Provincial Government of Sultan Kudarat headed by our beloved Governor, Honorable Dato Pags alias Maung Dato, and the Honorable Vice Governor, Prinsaden M. Sakaluran, our beloved Vice Governor, for the successful celebration of our Kalimudan Festival for mounting a festival that not only is culturally vibrant but is also safe, well organized, and inclusive for all, Mr. Chair. The recently concluded Kalimudan Festival was a success because of the support and cooperation of everyone. The Philippine National Police, the men in uniform, our military, the BFP, and everyone who secured our area for the success, full celebration of Kalimudan Festival, and of course with the leadership of our provincial government, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Janice Doliette.
Yes, in addition to S.B. Apiado, I would like also to congratulate the Tematic Parade as well as the float. And I would like to thank you sa mga teachers and as well as LGU staff sa nagperform during Tematic Parade and as well as sa aton, sa mga elected officials na nagparticipate during parade. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. So Honorable Janice, ang overall chairman to sa Committee Parade is ikaw?
Ah kita, dalis sa S.B. Office.
Sa S.B. Office?
Yes po.
Sinong designer siyang float ta?
Si Sir Scalona. June Scalona.
Tung si June, no?
Yes, oh.
So siya giman to nag... Pati ito sa costume ta?
Oo.
Do siya to nagdesign, no? So pati float ta siya man nagdesign?
Yes po. Pati ang sa saot siya kaya po na nagtrain.
Okay, okay. And ah, okay. Sige, so I would like to thank Mr. June Scalona for a job well done to our float, our Tematic Parade, and in training our dancers. Okay. So, Honorable J.R. Dizon.
Mr. Chair, um... Nagpangayo, palo up, Mr. Chair, tung ano, tung... Nahimuan na itong resolution last, I don't remember kung last month or last two months pa. Tung ah... Tung board passer from Laguilaian, tung top nature, nagpangayo siya palo up, Mr. Chair, na kung may aral na itong cash incentives na makuha niya.
Okay. Board exam for what profession?
Nursing, nursing board exam. Yung top nature sa...
Number one?
Ah, I don't think, number one, number nine?
Number nine?
Number nine, number eight. Si Miss Himino from Laguilaian.
Yeah, okay. So we already pass a resolution?
Yes, yes.
Ano, may, shall we review our ordinance? Can we check our ordinance on our incentives to board the top naturs? Okay, we'll go back to that later. Honorable Janice, your ah... you have a proposal earlier, and you have the presence of Kalawag three farmers, the... Are they pre- ano? Are they still around?
Chair, yes, Mister Chair.
Okay. So this ordinance was passed the previous, uh, term? Sige. Can we go to the body of the ordinance? With Latin honors, plus plaque, okay? Uh, for board and bar top naturs. Sige. Ay, amo lang na eh? Na, wala na? Paki-scroll up, wala na, amo na 'yung last line? Op, okay na. Twenty thousand? Ah, okay. We need to clarify. Ang top nature? Up to what? Ay, tamaka. Base my definition of terms. Ah, below the top ten, okay. So, qualified to? Pasok siya, kay top nine siya. Uh... I suggest, Honorable JR, ano na lang siya, submit siya written, uh, request citing the ordinance. Pwede man ma-assista siya. And we will submit, adre- the letter be addressed to the, ano, Honorable Mayor. Sige. So rules are suspended. We have our visitors pang, uh, Kalawag three, ay, kagawad? Uh, shall we, sige. Paki-state ang inyo concerned, kagawad, ano.
Uh, good morning. So sa farmer, uh, Kalawag three Farmers Farm Workers Association po, uh, regarding po ito sa mayor's certification as proof of existence of the association, sir. So, ang gina-required sang land bank is ang, uh, mayor's certificate. So hindi kami pag-hatagan kung hindi kami ma-accredit ang association dari sa SB po.
Ara ng checklist sa land bank?
Ay, ang sa land...
Can we flash on the screen atong iyanan? Anong ilang, uh, response sa inyo?
Uh, according sa ila, sir, um, magdaan daw po muna kami dito sa SB and ipa-accredit po ang, ano, association bago kami bigyan ng mayor's certification.
Uh, so hindi pa ka mo accredited gali?
Hindi pa po.
Even previously, wala pa ka man na-acredit?
Sa SB po, wala pa.
Ah, okay.
Kasi po, uh, vice, ang, namatay kasi 'yung previous na president ng Farm Workers Association. So ngayon, nag-create sila ng bago na office officer. At ito na po 'yung na-president nila ngayon. So may existing sila na account sa land bank. Tapos hindi nila makuha-kuha po, kasi, uh, nagkaroon po ng problem regarding po sa BIR nila.
Okay. So you have your new president now? May bago na ka mo president?
Yes po, ito po.
Ah, si mama, ate, sige. So, okay. So... Uh, we will include in the first reading the accreditation of, uh, uh, this association. Anong, kagawad, anong pangalan to sa inyong, uh...
Kalawag Three Farm Workers Association.
Association, okay, sige. You have your requirements?
Yes po, napasa na po.
Honorable Janice, uh, complete to ila requirement?
Sa desk officer.
Ah, sa aton nga si SO desk officer. Okay. So, sige, okay na kagawad. I-take up namon karoon.
Thank you po.
Ah, okay. Okay, so rules are restored. So still on privilege hour, uh, any more, uh, member would like to render a privileged speech? If there's none, then, uh, let's proceed.
We are now on the first reading. The first item is letter received from the Office of the Mayor addressed to the Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, requesting for a resolution to grant authority to the municipal mayor to enter into and sign a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Agriculture.
Do we have the, uh, Mowa?
Yes, your honor.
Okay, so schedule this for second reading.
Item number two, letter received from the Office of the Mayor addressed to the Honorable Vice Mayor. This is requesting for a resolution to grant authority to the municipal mayor to sign contract of lease with the four M pharmacy.
Okay, do we have also the draft?
Uh, yes, your honor.
Okay, so for second reading.
Then item number three, memorandum to the municipal Vice Mayor and other department heads from the municipal mayor. This is as regards the fourth quarter regular meeting of Isulan Local Project Monitoring Committee.
Fourth quarter regular meeting of Isulan local?
Scheduled, yes, your honor. November twenty-sixth.
November twenty-sixth. Okay, so for, uh, our information, but, uh, would like to call the attention of the Committee on, uh, huh, Infrastructureing and, uh, Infrastructure to be, uh, to be present uh, in the meeting, November twenty-sixth. Uh, so may, we request our secretary to make the proper endorsement to or referral to the committee, the committee members.
Well taken, your honor.
Okay, so next.
Item number four, the letter from the DILG to all city municipal mayors through the city municipal local government operation officers. This is, uh, as regards memorandum circular number twenty twenty-five dash one hundred seven in relation to the celebration of the thirty-fifth Library and Information Services Month in November twenty twenty-five.
November twenty?
November twenty twenty-five, your honor.
Tapos na?
So for this month, your honor.
For this month?
Yes, your honor.
Uh, di, anong celebration niya?
So, so it says here, uh, your honor, to promote public awareness and wider participation, all provincial governors, city mayors, municipal mayors, and punong barangays are hereby encouraged to support and take part in the LISM activities enumerated below. So we have the promotions and made media interviews, November twenty-five, opening ceremony, November five, Pinoy book character contest, November five, library exhibit bazaar, November five, live chicahan, LISM, November eleven and nineteen, library feud contest, November eighteen, Lola Basyang Chamber Story Telling Contest, November seven, bring me social media posting rare library materials, November, wala saang date, but it is for the month of November, book theater concert, November six, fourteen and twenty-one, seminar workshop, November twelve, book picnic outrates, November twenty-two, book la- launching impact stories, and it, November twenty-eighth, closing and awarding ceremonies, November twenty-eighth.
Okay, uh...
Wala na, no?
Venue?
Parwet, your honor.
Sige, pakais, before pa sinan?
I don't...
Arre, ba?
It is not stated, your honor, the venue. I think, uh, it is within the local government unit to implement this activity, sir.
This, uh, ano siya, the localized activity siya?
Yes, your honor.
Okay, so for our information.
Then it- item number five, executive order number forty-five, series of twenty twenty-five, issued by the municipal mayor. This is as regards the order constituting the local school board in the local government unit of Isulan. I then identify its members, their duties and functions, and for other purposes. So we have the composition, the chairperson, the honorable mayor, vice-chairperson, the schools' division superintendent, district supervisor, Department of Education members, the chairman, Sangunang Bayan Committee on Education, municipal treasurer, president Federation of Parents Teachers Association, president Federation of Sangunang Kabataan, representative of a non-sectarian private school association, Green Valley College Foundation Incorporated, Samahan ng mga Kababaihan Impaw, and the Association of Women Movers of Barangay Bamban.
Okay. Although superintendent bar?
District supervisor, your honor.
District supervisor, no? Sige, pakais, fold down. Okay. Do may kulang, Honorable Piado? Atong, uh, non-teaching?
Ara siya.
Ara siya?
Oh, non-sectarian? Ay, wala, non-te- non-teaching?
Hindi na yan? Private School Association, dahil lang?
Non-teaching?
PTA? Hindi na?
Yes, Mister Chair, um, the Federation of PTA under the, under the first page.
Ah, arisa first page.
Today, Mister Chair, uh, uh, ano, right now, our PTA Federation president is Honorable Moises Dolar.
Shall be composed of the municipal mayor? This is section ninety-eight?
Of the local government code.
Of the local government code. Paki-flash on the screen, section ninety-eight of the local government code. Arre, o, sige. Sige pa. Do number three kita? Arre, o, nan. Number three. Shall be composed of the municipal mayor and the district supervisor of schools as co-chairman? No?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Oh...
Ang unis po trasyorte?
The municipal, okay to, representative, uh, the SK?
The municipal treasurer, Mister Chair.
Uh, municipal, uh, Federation of the municipal?
Municipal trust, municipal federation.
Federation of Parents Teachers Association.
Yes, Mister Chair.
Uh...
The SK president.
Juilli elected, arre, juilli elected representative of the teachers' organization?
In the municipality.
In the municipality, sel- in the municipality, and the juilli elected representative of the non-academic personnel of public schools in the municipality as members. Ano, just take note of this, Honorable Piado?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Kasi kung magcollab ka mo meeting?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Paki-ano mo lang, uh, these are mandatory members of the school board. Ah, sige, ipipitcher pa. Sige. So for our information?
Item number six, letter received from the Office of the Municipal Administrator addressed to the Honorable Vice Mayor endorsing the following documents, first, letter A, letter from the DILG Rion Dosce. This is in relation to the twenty-ninth National Convention of the Vice Mayor's Leg of the Philippines and election of national officers.
For information?
On November twenty-five to twenty-seven at the Manila Hotel City of Manila. Then, letter B, request for issue. Then, letter B, request for issue one sub resolution in relation to the annual gender and development plan and budget.
Okay, so, do we have the God plan and budget?
Yes, Your Honor.
Attached to the letter? Yeah, ah, yes, Honorable Piado?
Tapos naman.
Ah?
Then, letter from the Isulan Municipal Employees Association addressed to the municipal mayor. This is in relation to the 32nd General Assembly of the Association.
Okay.
So... The celebration of the 32nd General Assembly will be on November 26 to 27. Yes, Your Honor. So, this is from Wednesday to Thursday. Two-day celebration.
Okay, can you please read the letter, Madam Sek? Para at least ma... ma-praise kita kung ano ang activities ang Ismeya ta?
So, it says here, the Isulan Municipal Employees Association will be celebrating its 38th founding anniversary and the 32nd General Assembly on November 26 to 27, 2025. To give meaning to this jovial celebration, the Ismeya has prepared several activities for all its members and other LGU officials and employees to participate and enjoy. Corollary there too, may I humbly ask for your approval to allow us to conduct the aforementioned events on the aforementioned schedule to be conducted in the Isulan Municipal Gemination, the municipal plaza, and other areas within the municipal compound. Moreover, may I humbly ask for your approval to allow us to use the LGU sound system, chairs, lead wall during the entire duration of the activity and the use of LGU service vehicles, particularly utility van yon day and black bag pickup with fuel... fuel to ferry the Ismeya members and other LGU officials and members for their motorcade activity on the first day of event.
Okay. So, for our information.
I... okay, Your Honor. We have here the Ismeya clustering of departments. So, for team name, Black Members Departments will compose this Black Members... Ah, Black Mambas? Black Mambas, the Engineer Office, Health Office, MSWDO, OSKA, and their respective job orders. Blue Tigers, the MPDO, SB, MBO, Agriculture, and their respective job orders. Purple Panthers, Office of the Mayor, including all sections, divisions, MDRRMO, and Legal Office under respective job orders. Red Dragons, Maso or Assessor, Accounting Office, Treasurer's Office, the Civil Register's Office under respective job orders. So, the events are volleyball, basketball, kickball, and larong Pinoy.
Okay. Schedule of activities? Uh, ano man siguro? Activity timeline siguro, ay, ano na?
So, we have also the Barako Queen for calendar year 2025. So, we have to support our candidate for this event, Mr. Stephen Araneta. So, wala... wala kita sang ano ba?
Barako eh? Hmm. Oo, will contribute para sa... kailangan magdaw na. Sinong trainer, si Niki? Ah, sino? Information, but, uh, all, uh, JO and regular and the members of this, uh, body are enjoined to support, participate in the Ismeya event. May singing idol pa? Ay, sinong singit pa? Adular? Ah, si... ah, SB Dolar? Ay, Gretchen? Tama, Gretchen. Sige, next item.
So, next is the Resolutional Number 2025-14 of Barangay Kalawag II. This is Resolution in Acting Appropriation Ordinance Number 2025-1 for the realignment of funds from various savings of personal services, maintenance and other operating expenses, and basic services and facilities in the amount of 1,780,992 pesos only to the different appropriation as stated.
I refer this to the Committee on Finance.
Then, we have item number nine, annual budget of Barangay Lagilayan for fiscal year 2026.
Uh, Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation.
Then, item number 10, the proposed resolution, um, accrediting the Kalawag III Farm Workers Association.
Uh, Honorable Janice, can we schedule this on second reading? Tong accreditation, sang Kalawag III farmers?
Yes, Mayor. Ah, yes, VN.
Yes, uh, uh, schedule this for second reading.
Then, we have the resolution of commendations to the two, uh, pupil... pupils of the Spad Center. Sinu to siya?
Yes, yes.
Halipat?
Spad Center, oo.
For, uh...
Winning the Math...
A judge as the...
Olympics Regional Level. Regional Level.
Yes, Your Honor.
So, uh, schedule this for second reading, this, uh, session.
Then, You... Your Honor, we have, uh, already finished the items as scheduled under first reading, but we have some, um, items which were not included in the first reading, Your Honor.
Okay.
And I think this is a matter of importance, Your Honor. So, first, we have here the proposed... The request from the Office of the Municipal Mayor for the urgent passing of resolution. Requesting for the... requesting for the urgent passing of resolution for the adoption and approval of the MDRRMC Resolution Number 2225-3. This is Resolution approving unfavorably endorsing to the Office of the Sangunyang Bayan of Isulan for adoption of the realignment augmentation of funds in the amount of 11,500,000 pesos taken from the appropriation intended for municipal-wide rehabilitation recovery, assistance for victims of natural and man-made calamities, the shelting and declagating of drainage and water waste, agroforest and ornamental plants, solid waste management program, capacity building, development of information education, communication, or IEC, support emerging and reemerging infectious diseases, purchase of disaster response and rescue equipment, operationalization of the MDRRM opsen, stockpiling of basic emergency supplies, purchase of early warning system, development of conduct and conduct of regular review of contingency plan and LDRRM plan, establishment of elderly, women, and child-friendly space in evacuation centers, and the anti-rabies vaccines for those. So, those, uh, items, Your Honor, of their corresponding appropriation to be realigned to the, uh... To... for the augmentation or realignment of funds.
Okay, do we have, uh, okay, so, what we need to do is to adopt the Resolution of the MDR. Uh, correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
Honorable Piado, uh... Do we have the Resolution? Of, uh, realignment?
Yes, Your Honor.
From the MDR?
Yes, Your Honor.
From the SB, who was present?
Noble Dolar.
Wala. Wala man dali? Wala siya.
Sa resolution. Absent siya.
Wala ako.
Uh, no... nobody from SB present? Yes?
As meant, this is on November 26 to 28 to be held at Century Park Hotel Manila. Oh, sino mga?
Okay, so, for, uh... Our, uh... For our information.
So, Your Honor, we have already exhausted the items in the under first reading, Your Honor. Well, proceed now to the committee reports. First committee to report is the Committee on Women and Family.
Okay. Women and Family. Honorable Ann Colliado or Honorable Darlin? Uh, Women and Family. Okay, so, the chairman, Honorable Anna Picoliado is recognized.
The presiding officer, Sangunyang Bayan of Isulan. Committee on Social Services, God, Senor, Citizens, LGBTQIA, and Children's Welfare. Committee Report Number 2025-03. Pursuant to the referred matter to this committee, a committee hearing was conducted on November 18, 2025 at 2 o'clock in the afternoon at the Sangunyang Bayan Session Hall, Isulan Sultan Kudarat. Invited during the same were the acting Municipal Social Welfare and Development Officer, the Municipal Budget Officer, and the members comprising this committee. Item letter received from the Office of the Municipal Social Welfare and Development addressed to the Municipal Vice Mayor, PO, requesting for urgent passing of resolution adopting the LCPC Resolution Number 01-25 entitled Resolution Approving the Annual Work and Financial Plan for Children 2026 and endorsing the same to the Sangunyang Bayan of Isulan for adoption. Discussions and findings during the committee hearing, LCPC Resolution Number 01-25 was presented and re-titled as Resolution Approving the Annual Work and Financial Plan for Children 2026 and endorsing the same to the Sangunyang Bayan of Isulan for adoption. The annual work and financial plan for children 2026 comprise different pro... programs, projects, and activities as determined by the LCPC intended to promote the general welfare of children that reach a budget of 9,192 pesos. that reach a budget of 9,173,592 pesos, which constitute 1% or more of the total IRA NTA of the national, of the local government unit of Isulan. The budget has the following breakdown. Attribution, LCPC PPA's, programs, projects, and activities, 3,173,592 pesos. MCV each, honorarium, 6 million, a total of 9,173,592. The Local Government Code or the RA 7610 provides for stronger deterrence and special protection against child abuse, exploitation, and discrimination, and for other purposes. The municipal government of Isulan is committed to uphold the rights and protection, promote the general welfare of children, taking into consideration the pillars of child development or the gift, namely survival, protection, and participation, and shall pursue programs and mechanisms to ensure the protection and development of children as mandated by the Constitution. The committee after adoro perusal and scrutiny of the different programs, projects, and activities PPA's embedded in the 2026 annual work and financial plan and budget for children found the same to be aligned and in accord with the existing plans of this municipality. In view of the foregoing legislative measure, it is necessary to adopt the approved annual work and financial plan and budget for calendar year 2026. Recommendation, wherefore premised as considered, this committee hereby recommends passing a resolution adopting the approved 2026 annual work and financial plan and budget for our children in the amount of 9,173,592 by virtue of LCPC Resolution, Local Council for the Protection of Children Resolution Number 01-25. That further, the proposed measure be deliberated on second reading this session. Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Social Services, God, Senior Citizens, LGBTQIA, and Children's Welfare, Chairperson Anna F. M. Colliado, yours truly, Janice Piduliette, Vice Chairperson and Darlene H. Lama, Secretary.
Uh, off the record again, same, uh-
[1035.48]
Okay. Anniversary, foundation, and tenth Panagdayo Festival of our Barangay. Findings: Item #1, Resolution #12-2025 of Barangay Council of Tayugo, and then to request a cockfighting permit in line with forthcoming 68 Patonal Piesta of Barangay Tayugo, wherein the date of cockfighting activities is supposedly on December 8, 15, '22, and December 29, 2025. It is note that the holding of cockfighting activity is not in line with the forthcoming barangay local piesta of barangay, but rather a paternal piesta, which means office is owner of a patron saint of the pastoral church of chapel situated in the said barangay. For barangay cockfighting, the request must adhere with Municipal Ordinance #2009-161 ISB, other known as the Cockfighting Code of Municipality of Isulan, which provides: Section 6, Rules and Regulation, the following shall govern the holding of cockfighting in the barangays. Number 1, there shall be no cockfighting activities in barangays of this municipality except during the occasion of the celebration of barangay piesta. The barangay concerned should only be allowed to hold cockfighting activities for three session, and that is during the following: Number 1, two days before bispires, and 2, bispires day itself subject to authority of the Sangguneang Bayan. Number 2, only the barangay government shall be allowed to promote cockfighting activities in their respective barangays on the occasion of local piestas. The concerned barangay government shall be responsible for the maintenance of peace and order and the safety of the public during the holding of the above mentioned activities in their locality. Number 3, filing of requests, the request of the Sangguneang Bayan for authority to hold cockfighting activity shall be filed at least 15 days before the scheduled dates of the cockfighting activities. The number of days shall be recononed from the time such request is received and stamped by the Office of the Secretary to the Sangguneang Bayan. Failure to comply with the provision shall result in the disapproval of such request. The Committee on Games and Amusement find irregularity on the request of barangay Tayugo, and it could not be had because it is in a violation of Cockfighting Code of the municipality. Further, returning this resolution to the barangay council of Tayugo for their information and future reference. Item #2, Resolution #20 Series of 2025 of Sangguneang barangay of New Pangasinan, entitled Resolution Requesting the Sangguneang Bayan to Grant Permit for barangay New Pangasinan Isulan Sultan Kudarat to Hold a Cockfighting Fundraising Project in Preparation for the forthcoming 74th Foundation Anniversary and 10th Panagdayo Festival of our barangay. Number 1, the resolution was received and stamped by the office on November 10, 2025. Number 2, the schedule of cockfighting activities are set on January 3, 4, and 5, 2026. Number 3, the purpose of the cockfighting activities is to raise funds for the piesta and to attract people from neighboring barangays as well as to create local business opportunities. The committee finds the request of barangay New Pangasinan to have substantially complied with the Municipal Ordinance #2009-161 ISB, other known as the Cockfighting Code of the Municipality of Isulan. Recommendation, based on the foregoing, the committee hereby recommends passing: Number 1, the resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay New Pangasinan relative to holding a cockfighting activities on January 3, 4, and 5, 2026 as fundraising project in preparation for the forthcoming 74th Foundation Anniversary and 10th Panagdayo Festival of our barangay. Further, this measure be deliberate on second reading this session. Respectfully submitted by Committee on Games and Amusement, Committee Chairperson Yours Truly, Committee Vice Chairperson Honorable Darlene H. Lama, Committee Secretary Honorable Engineer Marvin L. Dallanon, as all Mr. Chair.
Okay, so will you please move for the adoption of your report?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this Committee Report on Games and Amusement Committee Report #2025-03.
Okay, so the Committee Report of the Committee on Games and Amusement Committee Report #2025-13 is adopted, and the measure is calendared for second reading this session.
Item number, next committee to report is the Committee on Good Government, Ethics, and Labor and Employment.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable JR Dizon is recognized.
Mr. Chair, subject Committee Report on Committee on Good Government, Ethics, Labor, and Employment, Committee Report #2025-03. Pursuant to the referred matter to this committee, a committee hearing was conducted on November 18, 2025 at 3:00 p.m., at 3:00 in the afternoon in the Sangguneang Bayan Session Hall, Isulan Sultan Kudarat. Invited during the same were Human Resource Management Officer Ma'am Gina B. Toledo, the Municipal Budget Officer Ma'am Lailain B. Fernandez, the Provincial Director of the Civil Service Commission, SK Field Office, Mrs. Maria Josepina G. Brenbrazo, and the members comprising this committee. Item, An Ordinance Creating Various Plantilia Positions in the Local Government Unit of Isulan Providing for Their Qualification, Duties, and Function, Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes. Finding and Discussion: During the committee hearing, the HRMO presented the various positions of the local government unit of Isulan requested for creation especially under the Office of Sangguneang Bayan to read. Number 1, Administrative Aid 6, Data Controller 1, Salary Grade 6. Number 2, Administrative Assistant 1, Computer Operator, Salary Grade 7. The committee emphasized the importance of these two positions under the Office of Sangguneang, however, with the explanation of Municipal Budget Officer that the budget could not warrant the creation of these two positions, but rather to create only one position, that is, Administrative Aid 6, Data Controller 1, Salary Grade 6. The committee can't do otherwise but to force through the creation of only one position. Details of the said position are follows: Qualification standards, requirements, education, experience, training, eligibility. Minimum standard, completion of two-year studies in college, career service, sub-professional, first level eligibility. Data and function: Number 1, receive reviews in codes and verify official data documents required by the Sangguneang Bayan, such as ordinances, resolutions, committee reports, and legislative tracking data. Number 2, maintains and updates the legislative database and records management system. Number 3, organize digital and physical records for easy reference and retrieval. Number 4, ensures accuracy and confidentiality of data handled within the SB office. Number 5, assist in data analysis preparation for monthly or quarterly legislative performance report. Number 6, coordinate with SB Secretariat staff regarding information requirements for session, agenda, preparation. Number 7, generates data summaries, charts, or statistics required by SB members. Number 8, perform basic clerical and IT-related support tasks as may be assigned. The committee being recommendation, therefore premises considered, the committee hereby recommends passing an ordinance creating: One Administrative Aid 6, Data Controller 1, Salary Grade 6, providing for its qualification, duties, and function, appropriating funds, therefore and for other purposes. That further this measure be deliberate on second reading this session. Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Good Government, Ethics, Labor, and Employment, Committee Chair Yours Truly, Committee Vice Chairperson Honorable Carlo F. Apiado, Committee Secretary Honorable Darlene H. Lama, as all Mr. Chair.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this Committee Report of Committee, Good Government, Ethics, and Labor, Employment Committee Report #2025-03.
Okay, so the Committee Report #2025-03 of the Committee on Good Government, Ethics, Labor, and Employment is hereby adopted, and the measure be calendared for second reading this session.
Next to report is the Committee...
Agriculture, okay, yes, sorry. So the Chairman Honorable Alfonso Dimasua is recognized.
Mr. Chair, the Committee Report of the Committee on Agriculture and Cooperatives, this is Report #2025-06. Pursuant to the referred matter to this committee, the committee hearing was conducted on November 20, 2025 at 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon at the Sangguneang Bayan Session Hall. Invited during this meeting were the Municipal Agriculturalist, the Municipal Budget Officer, the Human Resource Management Officer, the Municipal Legal Officer, the MLGOO, the Provincial Director of the Civil Service Commission, Sultan Kudarat Field Office, and the member... Hello. A letter received from the Office of the Municipal Administrator endorsing to the Municipal Vice-Major Presiding Officer, the leader from DDILG, with the subject PowerPoint presentation and draft ordinance on the creation of the municipal agricultural and biosystem engineering offices. Discussions and findings: During the committee hearing, the item subject to this committee report was tackled, and the committee focused its discussion on the creation of Municipal Agricultural and Biosystems Engineering Office. The Municipal Budget Officer explained that the budget could not warrant the creation of the office as well as the position of the head of office, but rather to create another division or section under the Office of the Municipal Agriculturalist and the position of a section head, specifically one section chief engineer 3 with salary grade 19. The qualifications and job description of the position will be provided by the HRMO. And the... And di dona sa akin. Engineer 3, salary grade 19. Education required is Bachelor's Degree in Agricultural and Biosystem Engineering. The experience needed is two years of relevant experience in agricultural engineering or agricultural and biosystem engineering. Training required, it's only eight hours of relevant training, and the eligibility is of course Republic RA 10915 or Registered Agricultural and Biosystem Engineer. or Registered Agricultural and Biosystem Engineer. The functions... Allow me to read the fun- functions of the and responsibilities of engineer three of agricultural and biosystem engineer. Number one, provide agricultural engineering services which include engineering survey, preparation and evaluation of plans, designs, technical specifications, feasibility studies, and cost estimates, program of work of irrigation, small water impounding, soil conservation and management, farm machinery, slaughterhouses, poultry raising plants, post-harvest facilities, auction markets, farm-to-market roads, and other agricultural and fisheries infrastructure projects of the local government units. Number two, administer, supervise, and coordinate deconstruction operation, maintenance, improvement, and management of irrigation, small water impoundings, soil water conservation structures and facilities, farm machinery, post-harvest facility, facilities, and farm-to-market roads and other agricultural and fisheries infrastructure projects. Undertake the registration of agri- fishery machinery and facilities, enforcement of the PAIS and other agricultural and fishery engineering regulatory activities in coordination and collaboration with the concerned national government agencies. Coordinates, coordinate with the concerned national government agencies with regard to the implementation of national government programs and projects on irrigation, farm mechanization, post-harvest facilities, farm-to-market roads, and agricultural and fisheries infrastructure. Next, be in the front line of the delivery of basic agricultural engineering services. Then, provide training and extension activities to farmers and fisher folks, particularly in the installation, operation, and maintenance of irrigation, post-harvest facilities, agricultural and fishery machinery projects in coordination with the agriculture and fisheries extension workers. Then undertake and/or coordinate the pilot testing and commercialization of matured agricultural and fisheries engineering technologies and exercise such other powers and perform such other duties and functions as may be prescribed by law or ordinance. The recommendation of the committee, Mr. Chair, wherefore premises considered, this committee hereby recommends passing of an ordinance creating a deposition of one section chief engineer three with salary grade 19, prescribing its qualifications and job descriptions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. That further, the proposed measure be deliberated on second reading this session. Respectfully submitted, Committee on Agriculture and Cooperatives, Engineer Alfonso Dimasui, Chairperson, Engineer Marvin Eldalanon, Vice Chairperson, and Honorable Moises Dular, Secretary. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this Committee Report, and the, the measure be deliberated on second reading.
Any secondar to the motion? So the Committee Report of the Committee on Agriculture and Cooperatives, Committee Report Number 2025-06 is hereby adopted, and the measure be calendared for second reading this session. Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation. Uh, the Chairman, Honorable Carlo Apiado is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Mr. Chair, the subject is the Committee Report of the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means Committee Report Number 2025-21. Pursuant to the referred annual budget to this committee, the same was forwarded to the Office of the Municipal Budget Officer for preliminary review. On December 20, 20, 20, 2025, this office received a copy of the said review from the Office of the Municipal Budget Officer, addressed to the honorable members of the Sangguneang through this representation, Chairperson of this committee. Item, fiscal year 2026 annual budget of Barangay New Pangasinan. Findings, as per, uh, preliminary review, the fiscal year 2026 annual budget of Barangay New Pangasinan involving a total appropriation of 5,729,199 pesos, revealed substantial compliance with RA 7160 and its implementing rules and regulations, and subject to the following conditions as follows. Number one, capital outlays such as office equipment, IT equipment and softwares, and furnitures and fixtures with cost below 50,000 pesos shall be recorded as semi-expanding property pursuant to commission and audit circular number 2022-04 dated May 31, 2022. Number two, the provision of Republic Act 9184 and its implementing rules and regulations in the procurement of materials for infrastructure projects or civil works, goods, and consulting services, as well as commonly, commonly used supplies and materials pursuant to Administrative Order Number 17 shall strictly be adhered to. The appropriation and utilization of the PPA's under the 20% Development Fund as embodied in the AIP shall strictly comply with the updated deadlines of DILGDBM Joint Memorandum Circular Number 2017-01. Accordingly, it is recommended that the appropriation ordinance of the said annual budget be declared operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2026. It is understood that this review of action doesn't authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provisions of law. Finally, it is, in the implementation of this annual budget, compliance with all existing accounting, auditing, and other administrative rules and regulations shall properly be observed, and the same shall be the responsibility of the concerned implementing barangay unit. Recommendation, wherefore premises considered, this committee hereby recommends passing a resolution declaring the fiscal year 2026 annual budget of Barangay New Pangasinan involving a total appropriation of 700, of 5,729,199 pesos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2026. We further recommend, Mr. Chair, that this matter be deliberated on second reading this session. Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means, Chairperson Yours Truly, Committee Vice Chairperson Honorable Moises Dular, and the Committee Secretary Honorable Engineer Marvin Eldalanon. That would be all for the Committee Report Number 2025-21 of the Committee on Finance, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so there being no question?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of our Committee Report.
Okay, so the Committee Report of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, Committee Report Number 2025-021, hereby adopted, and the measure is calendared for second reading this session.
So, Your Honor, there are no more committee reports. We'll proceed now to the calendar basis under second reading. So first, we have the request from the Honorable Mayor to sign a memo, to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Agriculture.
Okay, so for our, uh, consumption, what is the agreement all about? Uh, Madam Sek, our obligation, responsibility? And, uh, or what program are we going to?
Paki ano, flash sa screen, room.
Good. Uh, re, dala, gula, gula, uh, ano eh?
Gulayan.
Gulayan sa, sige, let's go. Sabayan project, ah. Encore Group, dala, dala. May Encore Group, le balik ba, sino nila, will, uh, balik pa. Sige, party, sige pa. Sige pa. R I C, lagilayan, Virgen Maniago Valdez, ah, pangalan nila, sinong grupo kali, Encore Group, okay, sige. Okay. Sige, de, stopan ay. So Angdar will provide tools, seedlings, fertilizer, water, plastic drums, drip, okay, chicken net, plastic, okay, sige. Technical inspection, okay. Okay. Area, area nga to, MLGU. Documentary. Uh, assigned personnel. Sige. Scroll up. Okay, siya. Arap pa, seven, eight. Okay. So... Honorable, uh, Alfonso Dimasui, will you do the honor of sponsoring the resolution?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move for the passage of a resolution granting authority to the municipal mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Agriculture. Yan lang title niya.
Sige pa.
Title yan.
De, sabak, ano to? Are. Gulayan. Sabayan project.
Memorandum of Agreement Authorizing the Municipal Mayor to Sign a memorandum of agreement, uh... Sa Gulayan. If, this is different from our, uh, this is DAR project.
DAR project.
DAR, DAR. DAR, oh, sa DAR.
DAR, meaning DA.
DAR, DA, but, uh...
DA region.
DA region 12, no? Ah, diyan, Department of Agriculture Regional Field Office 12, hmm. Pero lagilayan lang ito, sa mga kuwan, uh, agrarian reform areas. So move, Mr. Chair, hindi ko makita ang kuwan, malayo.
Yeah, yeah, any secondar.
Oh.
So the resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor to, uh, sign a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Agriculture in connection with the Gulayan Sabayan, uh, project, uh, the same is approved.
Next on si- second reading is the proposed resolution to grant authority to the municipal mayor to sign contract of lease with the 4M Pharmacy.
4M, sige, let's go over the agreement, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Apiado. I just wanted to be clarified because under our, uh, Revenue Code, we've already, ano, included there in particulars, in a section, the, uh, contract of lease. I don't know if it is still necessary for us to pass a resolution, um, since, uh, the contract of lease is already included or incorporated in our Revenue Code, Mr. Chair, through an ordinance. Because if this will be the case, every stall rental of, uh, sa public market, matatagpas ang authority to ente- ente- lease contract, authorizing the, ano, the mayor to enter into a contract with the, uh, businessman in the public market.
Uh, sige, we, we read the endorsement letter, Madam Secretary. Okay, resolution to grant authority.
So it is, it is, it says here that the Honorable Mayor is requesting for the passing resolution to grant full authority to the municipal mayor to officially represent the municipality in effect her signature to con- contract of lease between the Municipality of Isulan and 4M Pharmacy.
Sige.
Of the record, Your Honor, maya, alakod ri nga, ikuwan ha.
Para ma-stadyan properly. Sige, next item.
So next item, Your Honor, is the, uh, proposed accreditation of the Kalawag 3 Farm Workers Association.
Honorable Janice Dulyat is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move for the passing of resolution for the Kalawag 3 Farm Workers Association for their accreditation.
Okay, so the accreditation of Kalawag 3 Free Farmers Association. Uh, uh, farm workers, uh, the accreditation of the Kalawag 3 Farm Workers Association is hereby approved. Next item.
Next, Your Honor, is the proposed adoption of MDRRMC Resolution Number 2025-3.
So... The Chairman, please an order is not around the Vice Chairman. Who is the Vice Chairman, Honorable Apiado, okay, so...
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution adapting MDC Resolution Number 2025-003 entitled Resolution Approving and Favorably Endorsing to the Office of the Sangguneang Bayan of Isulan the, uh, realignment augmentation of funds in the amount of 11 million, 11 million 50,000 pesos taken from the, uh... appropriation intended for... appropriation intended for... I mention ko pa din, ano?
Stockpiling lang ito.
Intended for the fifteen items.
For, uh, stockpiling.
For, to the realignment of the following items, one to fifteen. Uh, fourteen lang gali. Uh, fifteen, man.
Intended for the stockpiling of basic emergency supplies, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any secondary? Okay, so the resolution or resolution, M D R R M C Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-five dash zero three, which is the, uh, realignment of the following, uh, items, no, there are fifteen items, into uh, stockpiling of, uh, basic emergency supplies. Uh, these items is in the total sum of one eleven million fifty thousand. Uh, this resolution is hereby adopted.
Next, Your Honor, is the resolution of commendation to a grade-two student of Bisulan Spad Center, Alexander Franco Alcide, and a grade-three student, Marisol Polyn Lexila Vilokas still from Bisulan Spad Center for being adjudged as top one and top two respectively of, in the Regional Mathematics Olympics twenty twenty-five held at Tupi National High School last November twenty and twenty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Honorable J R Dison is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move for the passing of resolution commending, congratulations to the two young brilliant Isolanan mathematicians for their outstanding performance in Regional Mathematics Olympics twenty twenty-five held at Tupi National High School last November twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so the resolution of commendation to outstanding, to the two outstanding, uh, students for winning the Math, uh, Olympics, Olympics, uh, regional, uh, level. The same is approved. So, Honorable J R, can you do the proper representation? We can award the resolution on, uh, Monday, but, uh, be sure to follow up our resolution that the same is signed by the Honorable Mayor. Okay. Next, uh, item.
Next, Your Honor, is... of the Committee on Games and Amusements.
Okay, so, Honorable J R Dison is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move for the passing of resolution granting permit to Barangay New Pangasinan relative to the ho- to the holding of cockfighting activities on January three, four and five, twenty twenty-six as fundraising project and preparation to the forthcoming seventy-four foundation anniversary and tenth Panagdayaw Festival of New Pangasinan.
Okay, so the resolution are authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit for the conduct of cockfighting on January three, four and five of Barangay New Pangasinan. The same is hereby approved.
Next measure on second reading is based on the committee report of the Committee on Good Government, Ethics and Labor and Employment.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable J R Dison is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move for the passing of an ordinance creating the one administrative aid six, data controller one, salary grade six, providing for its qualification, duties and function, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes.
Okay, so, the resolution uh, approving the ordinance creating the administrative aid six, data controller one, with the salary grade six, providing for its qualification, duties and functions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes is approved.
Next on second reading is based on the, the proposed measure based on the committee report of the Committee on Agriculture and Cooperatives.
Okay, Honorable Alfonso Dimasui is recognized.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move for the passage of a resolution enacting an ordinance creating deposition of one section chief, engineer three, with salary grade nineteen, prescribing its qualifications and job descriptions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes.
Okay, so, the ordinance creating the position of one section chief, engineer three, with salary grade nineteen, prescribing his qualifications and job descriptions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes is approved on second reading. So, Honorable J R, we'll schedule on third reading the creation of the position you sponsored earlier and also the positions created sponsored by Honorable Dimasui.
So next on second reading is the proposed measure based on the committee report of the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means.
Okay, Honorable Carlo Apia do is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution passing of resolution declaring the fiscal year twenty twenty-six annual budget of Barangay New Pangasinan involving a total appropriation of five million seven hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-nine pesos operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so the fiscal year twenty twenty-six annual budget of Barangay New Pangasinan in the amount of five million seven hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred ninety-nine declared operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty... twenty-six? Seventy-six.
So, Your Honor, we have no more, uh, items on second reading. We'll proceed now to the third and final reading. So we have, first, the proposed ordinance creating the position of administrative aid six under the Office of the Sangunyang Bayan, particularly data controller with the salary grade six.
Okay, Honorable J R Dison is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move for the passing of an ordinance creating the one administrative aid six, data controller one, salary grade six, providing for its qualification, duties and function, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes.
Okay, so the ordinance creating the administrative aid six, data controller one, SG six, providing for its qualification, duties and functions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes is approved on third and final reading.
Next, Your Honor, is the, uh, proposed ordinance creating the position of bioengineering officer.
Okay, Honorable Alfonso Dimasui is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the enactment of an ordinance creating the position of one section chief, engineer three, with salary grade nineteen, prescribing its qualifications and job prescriptions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes.
Okay, so the ordinance creating the position of one of the section chief, engineer three, with salary grade nineteen, prescribing its qualifications and job descriptions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes is approved on third and final reading.
So, Your Honor, uh, there are no more items on third reading, so... and we have already exhausted the items in the order business. We'll proceed now to the unassigned business.
Okay, so unassigned the business. So, final decision for our Christmas party? Okay, December one, ang aton nga agreement, ano? Hindi kaya? So we'll move to another date and venue. Saranggani, I will, uh, give the authority to our secretary to arrange for our venue and accommodation.